All right. Thanks for indulging me on a few minutes of starting just a couple minutes late tonight. I had the honor of bringing some of the Yankton-Gazelle volleyball team up to the Summer Slam today to watch them. Hard to believe we're getting ready for fall high school sports. It's coming right around the corner. So with that, we'll start with roll call.
Brunick.
Here.
Johnson.
Present.
Mybaum.
Present.
Minor.
Here.
Schramm.
Here.
Villanueva.
Present.
Mayor Wolser.
Here.
City Manager Leon.
Here.
All right. Now is the time and the place for anybody in the public that wants to appear in front of the City Commission tonight on something not in the work session Seeing no movement tonight's work session agenda is to cover BBB and outside agency funding. So I will turn it over to City Manager Leon.
Thank you, Honorable Mayor, members of the Commission. I put in front of you a draft of the large print, BBB as it stands now. I know you can enlarge it on your screens, but it's helpful to see all the way across. So we'll start with the BBB and then move all the way down. This is a draft version, so your input and your ideas or direction. Of course, we're not going to vote today. Your time to vote on this will be when we present the budget to you for consideration. But if we're way off track, or there's a lot of desire for something or more than others, or less of something, more of something, tonight would be a good time to hear that from you. So we'll talk about a few things that have changed, some things that have stayed the same, and some new recommendations. And some are recommendations that I've actually heard from you as commissioners that you would like to see different in the budget. So we want to talk about that. I think the memo gives you a good outline to walk through those and understand our thinking on some of those, with a few exceptions. And our first one is one of those exceptions in the BBB. In under professional services, typically, we recommend, we've recommended an amount $5,000 for professional services for anything unanticipated or marketing-wise that comes forward to you for consideration. And that's what it does say in the memo. We have put in an additional $10,000 projected, and here's why. Some of you were on the Commission and some of you were not at the time where you approved a sales tax rebate for Larry's Heating and Cooling. So I don't know if some of you remember that or not. Nathan remembers that. And we've been paying for that out of the general fund. So, you know, we've done that with other businesses, like I think Culver's, Ace Hardware, Big River Burrito. And it really doesn't belong in the general fund. That's what we've been paying that back out of. However, our general fund is tight, really tight, and we're nervous about, to be honest, you'll hear this when we present the budget in a couple weeks, we're a bit nervous about what's coming forward. And so we think that it's suitable to be in the BBB. It's economic development. It was filling a retail need fit. What the then-Commission at the time felt was right for a sales tax rebate. So it is a payment, I believe, of 10,000, up to 10,000 annually for, Dave, do you happen to remember the length of the term? We can look that up, but it has a cap. So what we want to know is that if you think that's the right place to put it, or if you want it back in the general fund, if you're comfortable with it in the BBB, but I just didn't want to stick it in there without telling you what it, why that had increased or what that was.
This was Slumberland, right?
Excuse me. Yeah, I said Larry's, but I meant the Slumberland development, when they moved from the old build, what I call the old Larry's, into their new facility in northern, north, further north on Broadway, and expanded their retail furniture business.
And that would have been three years ago, when we put that into motion?
We're thinking 17. But the exact timing, I can't remember. I couldn't remember if you were on or not.
I recall it being 10 years. So I guess we're not quite halfway there then. But this is then the first time, this is then the first time that we'll have gone through these motions of rebating back to them, basically.
No, we've been rebating back, but we've been taking it out of the general fund. Why? It, I'm not sure why we decided to put it there, but we did. And we think it's more appropriate in the BBB because it is an economic development promotional expense. And we just are to the point in our general fund where we're drilling down on every entry. So we can always circle back if you want to talk about something else, too. We can get to the details, too, as to how much was expended, the cap on it, or the sunset on it. The historic facade program, so for a couple years, it was at 15, then I think went to 20, then went to 30. In the last couple years, you have increased it. The reason why you see the number you see in 2022 is because we haven't expended yet. There's a lot of projects that aren't getting done, just due to contractor availability and all the things that have delayed, all the things in construction, et cetera. But the good projects, the projects that we are monitoring. I put that back down at the $30,000 amount. But, you know, I wanted to hear your input on that. I felt like until we saw some of these projects completed, maybe it was okay not to get too far again into more projects. But as we've learned, it's easy, if one project is awarded, to spend more than 30 in one rehabilitation project. So up for your guys' discussion and consideration. You know, that changes the bottom balance, as you guys all know. So, but I know in the past, you've increased that higher than 30.
I'm comfortable keeping it at 30 or bringing it back down to 30. You know, when the committee reviews these, like you mentioned, Amy, that if we have more than $30,000 worth of really good projects, we can ask the Commission to give, put some more money into that program. So, but that is kind of interesting. And it makes sense that these projects aren't getting done in that calendar year because of the delays. So rather than keep fighting that, let's maybe delay things a little bit.
I think this year, we asked for more because we had one project that we really wanted to see funded. So that's possible as well. Any else want to chime in on that?
I think it makes sense to me. It just seems like if we're having a hard time getting these projects completed, and if we're looking at a little bit tighter budget, that that's something that we can, that we can increase if we, if we feel that there's good reason to do it. But I think it's, I think it's good to be conservative with it. I think it's such a fantastic program. I want to see it move forward in the future. And maybe keeping that down a little bit will be better for its longevity.
So outside of the most recent awardees this year, how many other projects are waiting, being closed out?
I'm looking to my right.
I think there's two, one of the big ones, and one is smaller, and that's like specialty
So not like a dozen. I would definitely say that this is that one item, for sure, that's at the top of my list. If there is qualified demand come next year, I'll have no problem supporting the decisions that come out of the group that reviews all the applications. It seems like there's been some really good momentum and interest in this program. And I wouldn't want some arbitrary $30,000 figure from two years ago to be the norm all over again, if there's demand. Again, I think these are the kinds of projects that are pretty straightforward when it comes to tracking. If there were quite a few more projects that haven't closed out, then I'd probably be more concerned, I suppose. But definitely something to keep an eye on in the years to come, for sure.
I think it's one of those things that you could all con visibly point to and show this is something that we, you know, the events and the special promotions, they're fun. But like, you know, fireworks, it's, we got to do fireworks, but it's fireworks and it's done. You know, this has a lasting impact. And I, you know, we like this program, too, as a staff.
Well, it's, it's the bricks and mortar that we're all excited about. And I think it's one of the biggest selling points of BBB funds is that they're going to be used towards bricks and mortar. And the beneficiaries out at the Heartland Humane Society are part of that as well now, too. So bricks and mortar, that's a pretty big deal. So we'll see what next year brings. But I'm okay with a $30,000 dollar amount at this point.
Okay. We still list Convention and Visitors Bureau and Yankton Area Progressive Growth, mostly because we want to keep in people's mind that Thrive is the, is the combined entity. Some people are, we all know that because we've gone through that whole process, but a lot of people aren't aware of that. But I wanted to make it clear in the budget that, you know, not just economic development functions, but also promotion and tourism and workforce development, all those good things are happening with Yankton Thrive. And we can certainly, you know, change that into one full title, but this is, we're just coming through the first year here of Thrive. And so want people to understand that all those things are happening. There was a request to increase that contribution to 460,000 annually. And I've recommended to you that amount. I did split it, but that's not necessarily how the Thrive Board allocates. So don't think that one area is necessarily going to be funded more than the other. That's up to Nancy and her board to determine in their budget. But I did want to let you know, the reason why I wanted to move this forward is we've charged, we've been charged as Thrive, and I say we because I'm on the board, with working on addressing workforce and housing as two of our major top priorities. Those programs and initiatives require more investment, and they need to be expanded. And we're still focused on all of the tourism and promotional things that, business services that other staff do as well. So we are partners with Thrive in all their endeavors. And, you know, I feel like that's a good place to invest your BBB, the BBB funds of the city, because it provides opportunity to gain BBB funds back. But these are my recommendations, and we'll see what, what you think.
I think it's interesting, though, now we have just one P and L and balance sheet that we're getting from Yankton Thrive. So different years past where we would get what would be the, the virtual accounting for the CVB as its own separate series of spreadsheets. So we're looking at a consolidated snapshot from Yankton Thrive, but we are accounting for them, you know, ourselves separately. So I don't know. It's, it's something that, you know, any studious Commissioner and City staff can go through here and, you know, figure out, I suppose. But I don't think we would necessarily ask Yankton Thrive to go back to the previous way that things were accounted for. I think it'd simplify things if we just had a single line item.
And I think we can combine them easily, just a matter of changing that in the budget. So that's not a problem.
Yeah, I would agree. Let's consolidate them under Yankton Thrive.
So there is just one entity, right? It's just the one 501(c)(6). Okay. So there's no separate 501(c)(3) as part of the mix anymore either, or ever?
So Yankton Thrive is a 501(c)(6). We have created in the past year the Yankton Thrive Foundation, which is a 501(c)(3). Up to this point, we have not done anything yet with the foundation. We have a board of three people who are separate from our Yankton Thrive Board, who manage those. But we have done nothing with the (c)(3) because we, within the past probably four months is when we actually received that IRS designation. So, so we do have a (c)(3), but have done nothing with it. But this allocation is only for the (c)(6) because you can't really co-mingle those funds for those entities.
I've got a great idea for that separate 501(c)(3).
And what would that be?
I would, I would love for the board to consider funding fireworks on an annual basis and having a separate nonprofit entity that can, you know, bring in funds from corporate benefactors, other outside groups, who would be interested in that type of write-off, I suppose, but also the marketing that can go along with that, very similar to what Sioux Falls has done with Sioux Falls Fireworks, sioufalsfireworks.com, where a separate nonprofit entity was set up for that purpose. Or even Mitchell, for instance. Or, you know, like in years past, here in Yankton, where it was a separate chamber initiative to do fireworks every year. But could be a good separate side mission for another entity. I see the entity that you're talking about here. So interesting to see that there's potential for other funds being solicited, I suppose, in a different way. And then perhaps a separate mission that Thrive will be involved in as well.
Well, I think the reason we created the foundation right now was to provide an opportunity specifically for workforce to go out and get diversity, equity, and inclusion grants or dollars to help hopefully bring that money into the community and remain focused on our workforce initiatives and not become sidetracked with a lot of other tasks or projects. If a separate group formed and created their own board to supervise a nonprofit for fireworks, they could potentially work underneath as an umbrella organization. That's what Connecting Cultures is looking to potentially do right now underneath the Thrive Foundation. I don't think the Thrive Foundation would take on as a task itself fireworks as a project right now. They really want to remain focused on initiatives that directly impact the workforce.
Okay. Other comments on Thrive? Otherwise, we're going to go to MSAC. In MSAC, you see we have the 2022 budget at 12,000. Your memo says 12,050, but we have it at 12,000 currently. Our annual contribution has been $2,500 historically. That's what they asked for. But some of you will remember that we invested 25, I believe, total into some research that they were doing. And we're carrying that forward. They make allocation requests from that when they need it. And so I think so far, they've only asked for one. But we're carrying that forward. But the $2,500 is the annual allocation to run their promotion and education. I think they have a part-time person that works with them. I don't think she's full-time, but help offset her salary. And we're one of a number of partners with MSAC.
Yeah, they're still working with the Corps of Engineers on Phase Two, which is what we provided the extra funding for, to find some potential solutions to sedimentation issues. So bring with the Corps. Just takes some time for them to get through their process. And we're making progress, just not as fast as everyone would like.
Fireworks is, is next. The fireworks includes the show as well as the restrooms and things of that nature. So that's historically been a really popular event in Yankton and continues to be. So was this year as well. So we'd like to know where we're headed early because Todd can get a good deal on the fireworks when we buy them early.
Was that about 10 years ago that the city took on the entirety of that?
It was before me. So it had to be more than 10. What do you guys know?
Probably 2009.
2009, so, yeah, 1015.
I'd definitely like for us to explore the ways of funding it. There's other communities, I think, that are doing a good job of fundraising for fireworks. It has always, it's a great event, no doubt about it. It's always been one of those weird subjects for me where no greater way to celebrate your independence than having your own government put on the fireworks show, rather than, you know, a coalition of citizens and
That's pretty funny.
...businesses and messages. And it could be something bigger, I suppose, than just the city spending $27,000 on fireworks. It's not necessarily a event that we monetize. And that's understandable as well. But it could definitely be something that corporate partners could benefit from in a big way if it's marketed the right way. And again, I'd use the example that Sioux Falls has set, where their Jase, I'm trying to think. They always did it at the fairground. I can't remember the entities who did it. Maybe it was the Jase's out of the Sioux Falls Fairground. And then they formalized a nonprofit organization. So it's completely funded by corporate donors and partners. And they work with their local radio stations to promote the event, where they have the radio stations play the music that accompanies the fireworks show. And as people are sitting there in the venue for three hours, then they're treated to, you know, promotional material from the benefactors who made the event happen. So it's a lot of things that we don't do right now. And I don't necessarily think it's the city's position to go out there and try and monetize fireworks. But I can certainly see private citizens and our corporate partners probably putting together something just as good if the city just has to say yes to allowing fireworks on the bridge.
Yeah, I'm sure our special events folks would be open to that discussion. It's not just the fireworks, not as easy as calling the fireworks folks and the porta-potties folks. You know, there's a lot of, a lot that goes into it, the moving of the tables, scheduling officers, getting, you know, the glow sticks, which we found out we need more of. But, you know, so it's, it's not just that. So it is a big undertaking. And I, if someone else in the community wants to take it on or take part in it or fundraise for it, I think we'd be more than receptive to that. We're not perfect as a staff yet. I mean, we're close, but, but I think that, in my opinion, Parks and Rec, along with all the other departments that have, have put on a consistently quality show. So we can be better, and you know what you're going to get. So, you know, we would want to make sure that if we were releasing that off into the, into somebody else, that it does stay consistent and can continue to happen and, and be the quality that we expect for a public event.
I can definitely tell you that if, if it weren't just celebrating independence, but we're also celebrating our diversity, equity, inclusion, that'd be great. I don't know if the city would necessarily be the best to lead in that effort. But it'd be great to celebrate more than just the independence that unites us. There's a lot of things that unite us. Could be our diversity, equity, inclusion as well.
Duly noted. But I think I'm hearing, from what I'm not hearing, that everyone agrees fireworks is a good idea.
I would agree with that.
Kramer Canyon House, they have requested $2,500. That's what we have historically contributed to them. And that's what I am recommending, that we contribute to them again this year. No, nothing specific outlined. You know, sometimes they have something specific outlined. But just like in our own houses, where we have to spend money for upkeep and maintenance, they have a, you know, 100-year-plus house. So they have a lot of things that need to be maintained and taken care of. So that's the reason for that. National Field Archery has not made a request for 2023 tournaments. They have a tournament here coming up in October, which we've already contributed to. I believe it's one that was postponed, but they have not requested anything going forward. I do not know if that will continue. But we keep that line item there because there is always the potential that if they sponsor an event or a tournament, that they may make a request. I'd like to hear about Lewis &amp; Clark Theater from you. They did not submit a request. However, I know that they need, they, they can use the funding. Sometimes in the past, their board has not always been as consistent with leadership and members, and they have just missed it. I haven't had any communication from them. I did put $2,500 in. I think that, you know, that has a potential in our community yet untapped. Even communities like Wyburg, who's quite a bit smaller than us, have done some things with their local theater. And I don't think the full, I don't think we've seen their second act here yet at Lewis &amp; Clark Theater. But they didn't make a request. And so in some people's minds, that should maybe go off. But I'll leave that to you and what you think.
I'm fine with leaving it. And I'm fine with taking it off.
Given the volunteer board, et cetera, et cetera, I would, I would consider leaving it. It would be nice to communicate with them and make sure that they know they missed it. I'm biased as a theater person.
No.
I agree with Commissioner Minor. I mean, I do know we've had a history with them. I do think the theater and the arts are important in our community. And I, we've taken strides in our community throughout the years, not only in theater, but in sculptures and things like that. So I'd hate to be a little cold-hearted in the way that we've worked aggressively through the years to provide that in our community. But I do think we could put them on a little bit shorter leash and kind of give them a notice that, you know, we went ahead and did it this year, understanding that, you know, but that we can't continue in the future if they're not following the rules because that's not fair to other entities that, that do go through and follow the rules, but that we're willing to work with them this year, but that...
They were a recipient of the facade grant program this past year. So because I don't know who was actually heading up the theater part of this anymore, I was going to touch back with Dave's department and see who's got the grant out. Maybe they know something or who we can communicate with. But, you know, I think that's a jewel waiting for someone to move it in a different direction. Maybe a retired theater director. So all these things, too, you know, this isn't your only opportunity. When we get to the point of you considering the budget, those things can change as well, and they sometimes do. The website maintenance fee was a bit higher. In 2022, it's estimated at, to be 12,500. And that's because we did some redesign and a prorated share was billed and paid for this year. So going forward from 8,000 to 10,000. I don't think we have to talk much about our website in the sense that that's probably one of the most important pieces of information, education, and archives that we have now. So it's something we have to maintain. And if you've jumped on our website, you'll notice that we're continuing to, we've refreshed it. we've refreshed it, um making some changes as we go, and it's, I think, looking better and better all the time. Number 10 is a back in history again. Um, some of you were on the commission when we started out a triple B budgeting to start repaying ourselves back for the purchase that we made, um HSC land, which we're now kind of calling soccer property paradigm property, but back when it was purchased, they called it the HSC property. I put that back in the budget in 2023. Um, the reason I had taken it out is when uh we were looking at some tighter years and especially with COVID, not knowing where that was going to land and how that badly that was gonna shake our BBB. I, we zeroed that out, and I thought that was smart at the time, comfortable putting that back in. Beginning in 2023, I think we've had it as high as 100,000 uh in the past. I'm gonna keep going unless I hear someone interrupt me.
So on this, uh, the HSE land purchase, number one, this is an internal loan to ourselves.
It was an internal loan, and um, Duane, do you happen to know where we're at with that?
That sounds, sounds right to me. Um, but it, but um how much are we paying ourselves to have lent to ourselves?
Zero.
Okay. That is all.
Moving on to Riverboat Days, unless someone else wants to talk more about that. You remember John Kraft was here not very long ago. You talked about 10,000 for this year, 10,000 for next year. Well, you didn't talk about it, you voted on that. Um, and then asking Riverboat Days to fill out that outside agency form moving forward from there. I put $10,000 in there, that in the out years, um for budgeting purposes, but whether you're north or south of that will be up to you at those budget years. But I don't think there's much to discuss there since you already voted for it. At least in the first couple of years. Um, under special events coordinator activities, um I did budget 95 in each 2023, 2024. And uh here's why. So we have been budgeting 45. That was the amount that you uh moved to um special events coordinators activities to assist with two things. That's the market, or market, it's the Music at the Meridian series and Kids in the Park series. And um Todd and his staff were able to make those a little bit more robust, um bigger acts, uh expand the, expand the Music at the Meridian, I think at least a couple shows. And we have been successful with partners. Last week, Avera was our partner, and we had the ability to with their financial help, do a bigger named uh production, and also there was a giveaway of ice cream, and so that was really nice as well. But so that's already there, um and that piece can certainly move north or south, depending upon what you guys are comfortable with. One thing I'm noticing is that our Parks and Recreation Department is turning more and more also into Entertainment Department, which is fine. Some recreation is about getting together in communities and bringing people together, and that's what these two particular different types of series events have done. So we like them. Um, and they've been good, I think, for the community. The additional 50, 23, 24, is to prepare us for the 100th anniversary of the Meridian Bridge in 2024. Um, I don't have a clear vision yet of what I see happening there, um but I think we'll have some bigger events associated with that celebration, definitely some community education. I want to put together a committee. I have a couple key community members who have already stepped up and said they'd like to serve on such such committee, but to be able to start that planning next year, and I'm guessing, just like Riverboat Days experienced, if we're going to book an act or booked book something that's going to be significant, we're gonna have to do that in advance, and it isn't gonna be inexpensive. So um the $100,000 is just a number that I, you know, I I came up with, because I think it's a really big once-in-a-lifetime, not even once-in-a-generation thing, and I feel that we should focus on it and make a big deal out of it, because that will be the catalyst, in my mind, to get our community, our whole community, to wrap their arms around how important that bridge is. It's not meant to be a, you know, seed money for the bridge. That's not what this is meant to be. It's meant to inform, celebrate, understand. If people aren't in love with that structure, to have them fall in love with it through this celebration. And we haven't put a lot of thought into it because I'm not sure how much money you want to put into it. So I'd like to hear that from you. Um, we'll we'll do as much as we can with whatever we have. So, you know, we understand if that's too thinking a little too big. But really, you know, I I I don't know what what or can't speak to the to what a bigger name band costs, but uh we know just based on our um acts that we have on Thursday nights, you know, there's quite a commitment there, and and those are small compared to what we'd like to see happen.
Sounds like a good plan to me. Um, you know, just thinking back to the 150th anniversary event and kind of the city getting into the whole events, planning and executing uh business. It's because it was getting harder and harder to find volunteer organizations who want to do stuff like that. And so I think the city's been a good solution in that we have dedicated professionals who are planning these events and can coordinate within the city to pull everything together. So I think it's a good plan. And I agree that it's, it'll be important to kick off what hopefully is a fundraising platform to save the bridge.
For those of you who remember that event, that budget was larger than this, so just scaling, and that was now 10 years ago. But but um, you know, we kind of see this as being a year-long celebration in a sense of maybe some different things throughout the year, getting uh the kids uh involved and getting the school district uh support in helping with that um as well. So and I'm and I'm open for creative ideas as well, but
So how much bigger was the budget for the 150th? Do you know?
I don't know off the top of my hand, off the top of my head, but um I was gonna say 150, is that what you're saying? 150? And not including, I don't think, the overtime and the, you know, as I recall, I wasn't with the city yet, but as I recall, the city had kind of all hands on deck.
It's about 1,000 a year. So it felt fair.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, the bridge is gonna be 100, so.
So we're going to um set aside $50,000 into a special account?
Well, it's not in a special account. We, I mean, you can do that if if that's what you want to do.
I'm just unders, trying to understand then how how is the money going to get effectively set aside and accounted for?
Well, we'll be able, you know, of, in your, in talking with Todd, I'll tell him, you know, 45,000 roughly each year for Music at the Meridian and Kids in the Park. Plus whatever you have for sponsorships, and I'm hoping with the 50 each year, uh we're able to get some sponsorships as well. I'm not saying we have to spend 50. If we are able to get a lot of folks behind what we're trying to do with the 100th anniversary celebration, once we can articulate that and communicate that, maybe we wouldn't need to spend all of that. But um we would, we'd keep, we'd just keep track of it. But you can cer, we can certainly separate it within this budget as well and do a Meridian Bridge 100th. I just thought, you know, since it's a one-time one-year thing that isn't going to be repeated over and over, um we wouldn't do a separate line item, but that doesn't make any difference to us, I don't think.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm drawing a blank. When's the 100th anniversary?
2024.
Okay.
The reason I split it two years, Commissioner, my mom was, from what I heard from Mr. Kraft on Riverboat Days, you seem to book early, sometimes ahead. So I wanted to have some in 2023 for planning and booking and committing if we if we needed to do that. And so we would probably carry forward if we didn't spend, I'm thinking. I I never had a 100 birthday party for a bridge before. It's first, first time.
I I I think it is appropriate to at least budget for it. Um, we don't necessarily know what that plan is, but that doesn't mean that we shouldn't be planning to have a plan. Um, I think this is a a good first step towards that. Um, if we can and and maybe this will seed some ideas with some other folks also as far as what we can do with the with the anniversary, with the 100th anniversary, and then raise
Yeah.
raise awareness for the bridge. We all know that at some point, that bridge is going to be something that is, there's going to be some major expenses to come along with that at at some point in this um, you know, this city's um responsibilities.
Yeah, and and poor Luke, you know, he doesn't know any, he doesn't know what he's getting into here, but, you know, I was kind of thinking some of the things we already do, make them, you know, like we had Avera Night, we are going to have um, you know, I think last year we had a uh HDR night with Music at the Meridian, you know, make some, make one of our Music at the Meridian or Kids in the Park more orientated toward the bridge, so and so make some of those things more special and more focused on the bridge, and then do something in independent of that, that would be more, you know, just, you know, I don't know if it's a day activity or we haven't put, we needed, we needed to know if there was money before we get too excited, so.
Amy, just an essence of time. It's almost 6:45.
Sorry, getting in trouble. Let's keep going. Uh, Yankton Baseball, uh 3,600 in the past, 3,600 requested, 3,600 recommended. Please let me know if you want to talk. Um, Yankton Area Arts, uh, recommended 5,000. Just remember that you also contributed some funds and just to remind you, Yankton Area Arts for their art study. Um, just reminding the commission of that.
Sorry, real quick. So the uh the arts studies that I had seen other communities come out with, there are recommendations that typically go along with the results that they present, and it's usually you need to be spending more money here, and you need to be spending more money here. There's pats on the back that are included in the reports, but that's not something that's currently reflecting here in 2024 and 25.
Correct. I have not seen the, I haven't seen the outcomes or recommendations yet, but
Just an FYI.
It's not complete.
Yeah.
No, no, it's it's underway, and it won't be done until next year, I think. So just an FYI.
It's coming.
Looking ahead.
Yeah. Uh, special projects, we always put a little bit of money in special projects as I did in the future years. Gives you a little bit of flexibility if there's something that comes forward. I remember one year we had a I think a bowling tournament that came forward that asked for some support, things like that, that are one-offs that you want, want to see support. The transfer uh to general uh general fund for special events overtime, uh we increased that just because we believe that you will consider an increase in in wages and um we're, that impacts the overtime spent on um for our people. So things like um 4th of July, we don't have enough folks scheduled on the 4th of July to to pay them straight time, so we call in special, you know, special events overtime, things like that. Um, so that's where that comes from. Transfer to general fund to outside agencies. So I recommend an increase in the transfer to general fund to outside agencies to uh 15,000 beginning year 2023. So what we uh fund there are um Collective Impact, Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health, uh Yankton Transit, Small Business Development Center. And then um I'd one of the sales tax reimbursement incentives, and I'm not sure which one that is. Oh, Larry's that you just moved. Thank you. Next, we have the transfer to the Huthar Family Aquatics Center. Um, we've done that the past couple of years. Uh, that is for marketing and promotion of the Huthar Family Aquatics Center. We've uh know that uh we've been successful these next, these last two seasons, and we want to continue that success and continue working with Thrive and promoting that with our tourism um publication that the community does, and look for other outlets too, to continue to drive people to that facility.
Do you ever see us just completely relying on Thrive and their marketing experts to market the Huthar Family Aquatics facility for us as part of our contribution?
Um, they
To Thrive?
Possibly. They they do a lot of the marketing, like what I would call traditional marketing and promotions now. You know, some of the promotional things are the the rack cards that we do, for example, and and um those types of things that are kind of in-house publications. Last year, and I don't know if if Sony had anything like this this year, but last year we did some giveaways um on special days, like I think we had sunscreen one day and maybe some sunglasses or some things like that, those types of things we we purchased. The billboard is the biggest expense um that we have. So that takes, it gobbles up a lot of that budget, but certainly possible.
What billboard?
There's a billboard on the way out to the lake.
Oh.
That talks about the aqua, I think it's a slide in the summer this year. You're on your way. So and I, it's hard to know if those drive attendance or not. Anecdotally, I can say people that I know from Canton, Sioux Falls, who's camped out there have seen the billboard come in. They knew about the facility before they saw the billboard, so I don't know if that drives them there or not, but they at least recognize it enough to mention it. Talking about the um TID debt service, um we're asking uh that we allocate 100,000 annually. So we've talked about in past budget years where we had 70,000 to cover the um debt service and the Menards TID. We think that now going forward, that will be whole, and we won't need that. But we know that the TID we're going to be recommending to you to consider uh in the next few months, which is going to be the 33rd Broadway, is going to not perform very strongly. And so we think that we need to find some ways to help cover that debt service. And BBB is one of the ways that we um do that, especially for economic development projects.
Amy, did you cover transfer to Park Capital?
Oh, no, I I missed that one. So I'll go back to that. Thank you, Mayor. The transfer to Park Capital, I'm recommending um $10,000 transfer to Park Capital. That's how we purchase banners, uh flags, and the fittings on the pool. Um, that's typically every other year that we make a small purchase, and then once every few years, there's a large investment when we need to do a lot of replacement with Christmas decorations, et cetera. And I don't know if anybody wanted to talk about the TID debt service item. But I'm gonna get organized to talk about the outside agencies that are funded in the general fund. So you, there are a number of outside agencies that we fund through general funding. One is the Collective Impact. That's the United Way funding. So if you remember, uh, we started doing uh this uh as one allocation, and we have commissioners that serve on the United Way Board. Um, they have that serve on the United Way Board. They have recommended an increase to 45,000. That's an increase from the previous contribution of 39,325, and I'm, I'm recommending that increase. A lot of the agencies that, that Collective Impact funding supports are seeing greater need in our community, especially after last year. So that was my reasoning in that recommendation.
I'll just add, at our most recent United Way Board meeting, they said they're seeing more activity than ever coming through their office and associated offices, so definitely need there.
Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health, they've requested 20. That's been the historic contribution. Just a reminder that we also have assisted Lewis and Clark Behavioral Health with in-kind contribution of land, and so I feel like this year we did do more with Lewis and Clark, definitely, and more need in our community, but I do think in that way, the commission has supported them. Transit, recommending the requested 45,000. It was increased several years ago to help meet some of Transit's needs. Small Business Development Center, continuing with the 4,500 annual contribution. Heartland, then again, we just talked about that last time, but 45,000 in 2022 per year action. And then as well as the transfer of the sales tax reimbursement to the BBB. Contractual Services, we have one with Planning District III that we fund here under outside agencies. Planning District III helps us with a lot of things there. They requested a $214 increase next year, and that's been recommended as well. And those can all be found on that, on that one single-sided eight-by-10 sheet, if you're looking for, for those. So I don't know if there's any comment or discussion on any of those outside agencies I'm not hearing anything.
Triple B Fund, the expectation, I guess, as it's laid out here, is 3% growth for the next several years.
I'm sorry. Could you say that again?
3%.
You're on, I just...
3% growth is what I'm showing in this document.
Yes, so that's what we put in for 2023. When, when you have your Excel sheet on your, in your OneDrive, you can play around with that percentage if you're more optimistic or more pessimistic than we are. So we're conservative there, but I like to be conservative when we play with that percentage. But that then will be your, you know, ending balance. If you fund it as, as presented, and, and that was the growth that was received, that would be the ending, ending balance. And different commissions over different years have had different philosophies about that balance. Some people feel 500 is acceptable. Some people, some commissions have felt they want more of a balance there in case there is a project that comes in, that, an economic development project that comes in that would need a boost to make happen. That's all philosophical, so.
My only question is, I know that we have traditionally given Heartland Community Society $20,000 a year. Where is that in the budget?
That's going to be in the police budget. It's contracted service with the police. So when you get your budget presented to you, which will be before, I hope, before we go home on Friday at 5 o'clock, because we have to give it to you before the first of the, of the month, if you go through the police operating, that's where you'll see that. And there is a little, it says, I think it says professional services, and then in print, Heartland.
Any other questions for the city manager in reference to triple B or outside agency funding for tonight?
I just want to say, I know this takes an extraordinary amount of thought and sleepless nights and wailing and gnashing of teeth, and I think this reflects where we are right now, and I appreciate the hard work that, clearly the hard work that so many people have put into it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Seeing no other questions from my fellow commissioners in relation to triple B and outside agency fundings, we do not have any other business in front of the commission during the work session this evening, so I would ask for a motion to adjourn the work session of July 25th.
It's a moot.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, and anybody abstaining. All right. We will adjourn the work session. We have a whopping three minutes before we start the regular city commission meeting tonight.